Ready to start?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, all right. Welcome, everybody, to the Rye Town Council meeting of August 18th, 2020. Debbie has the flag behind her. Let us join her in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I say so, America.
One nation, under God.
For God.
Liberty.
Liberty goes justice to sprawl.
Okay. Thank you. Hope, please call the roll.
Sure.
Counselperson Jill Axelrod.
Present.
Counselperson Lindsay Jackson. Counselperson Pam Jaffe.
Present.
Counselperson Tom Snardi. And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
President and Lindsay will not be joining us tonight.
Okay, so I always like to call it once.
Tommy, Tom Snardi will be joining us as soon as he's available. With that, let us move on to the adoption of minutes for the July 21st meeting. If there are no additions or corrections, they have a motion and a second.
So moved. So moved.
All right, there are only two of you, so one moves one second, we're going to move this way.
Rock, paper, scissors.
All right, so I'll move.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
In favor.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm going to, I know that you guys are waiting, but let me skip that and do a couple of the the
There are those?
Yeah, let's go down to number 6.3, the resolution to retain Edie McCarthy consulting for the town of Rye. I think I'll have Denise, can you tell us what this is about, why we're retaining Edie?
Well, Edie was an instrumental part in the revow, she was our monitor. So, moving forward, it would be a good idea to keep her on board for a nominal fee to advise us on revow issues, assessment in general, she's going through her own revow in Greenberg at this time, and she has a very good relationship with Tyler, we intend to also continue our relationship with Tyler for updates, so I think it's a prudent idea to retain her services as a consultant.
Okay, and you mentioned Tyler, probably next month we'll have a contract on the agenda to approve for them as well, this is an effort to maintain our assessment role as accurately as possible, so that we are in the strongest position when we are faced with tax cert cases, and also generally to just make sure the assessment role is always correct, or as correct as it can be. So, the contract is for $7,500 per year and $625 a month, may I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Please call the roll, Hope.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. The next resolution is to engage Nix Electric for town electrical services, Debbie, you want to tell us what this is about, please?
Yes, the town has, you know, various low-level maintenance issues, lights out, that kind of thing, so we need an on-call electrical service provider. The, we were piggybacking on a contract that was from the village of Rybrook, that contract came to an end, they went out to bid, and so did we, so we went out to bid, we got three proposals, and Nix Electric was the lowest responsible bidder, and will not be changing their rates for three consecutive years, and they're consistent with the rates that they are currently charging us, so we, I recommend that we take that deal.
Okay, and they are our current electrician?
Correct.
Okay, any questions? If not, may I have a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, call the roll, please, Hope.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you, and we'll, we'll do the local law at the end, let's welcome our auditors and accountants to present the 2019 audit. I have Jeff, and on the next screen, Scott, are you still here, Scott?
I'm still here.
Okay, Davy's here.
I'm still here.
My neighbor, will you, will you give them the ability to share their screen?
Yeah, so Jeff has to share. Can every, everybody see that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So, I'm Scott Olling, one of the partners at O'Connor Davies, I'm joined tonight by Jeff Shaver, who is the engagement partner in charge of the day-to-day running of the Town of Rye's audit, this is, we're talking tonight about the audit for the year that ended December 31st, 19, and obviously, there's been a lot of stuff going on in 2020, so at least tonight's presentation is to kind of, at least give you an idea of where you ended 2019, because I think that's now an important jumping off point, as we deal with all the troubles that we know we have in, in 2020, that, you know, hopefully, we're going to show you that at least you're going into 2020 in, in, in pretty good financial condition for the town, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do some introductory stuff here, and then I'm gonna let Jeff do the heavy lifting, I'm gonna go over with you some of the required communications that we have as your audit firm, and you are also in possession of, besides this PowerPoint, you're in possession of the actual PDF copy of the audit report, the 50-some-odd-page audit report for the town, as well as a, a letter of required communications that, that we provide you of, of any findings and comments that we had, so I'm gonna talk to you briefly about those communications, Jeff's gonna then take you through, believe it or not, you adopted a new accounting standard in the middle of all this, and that required some restatement of the previous year's financial information, and then, we're gonna spend most of this time talking to you about the general fund, giving you a summary of the overall revenues and expenditures of the town's general fund, and compare that to what your budget expectations were, and then we're gonna do a deeper dive into both general fund revenues and expenditures, to, to, to give you some of the reasons why some of the, the numbers came in the way they did, and then, of course, one of the most important things is, where did you end up at the end of 2019, as regards to your fund balance, and again, that's a very key number, as you head into, you know, what's going on here in 2020, and then Jeff will close out with talking about some of your debt service obligations that, that the town has, so as regards communications, and these are required under audit standards that we have to follow, so, one of the things that these standards talk about are delineating the responsibilities between management and those charged with governance, you know, the, the town council, versus the responsibilities that we have as your auditor, so, a couple of the things that, that you folks are responsible for are selecting and implementing appropriate accounting policies, and, you know, we evaluate those as, as, as part of the audit, and, you know, are, are glad to say that you, you have the proper policies in place, even though we help prepare the financial statement on your behalf, it is your responsibility, and having those statements fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles is your responsibility, and that is what you have done with these December 19 statements, the internal control over what is reported in these financial statements is, is highly important, if, if the controls that the town has in place are not appropriate, and we can't rely on the numbers that those systems generate, then what good is the financial statement, so it's important that, that you have a good internal control, a structure, which you do, you're responsible for complying with whatever laws, federal, state, local regulations, contracts, grant agreements, all that kind of stuff, that is your responsibility as the overseer of the town's activity, you are responsible for making sure, through the, the finance folks, that we get everything we ask for as regards to the audit, all the, all the financial information that we need, otherwise, we would potentially have a scope limitation and, and, and have to do something with the audit opinion, but we received all of that information, and of course, as, as the essential head of the town, you have to set the proper tone for, for all the, the departments and, and things that, that you supervise, so then, I would take you to the next slide, Jeff, and so basically, now, what are our responsibilities as your auditor, well, the important thing is the report that we issued, and that Jeff's gonna go through with you next, you know, in summary form, what happened financially in the town, and even though, as I said, we, we helped prepare and put together this 50-plus-page document, the only part that belongs to us is the independent auditor's report, and that report is basically saying, for you and the readers and the financial community, that we've issued what's known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the town's finances, meaning that, you know, we believe that, that the numbers that we are presenting to you clearly present what happened in 2019, we also did a justice court audit to, to account for all the receipts and disbursements made through the court in the town, and as I mentioned, we already provided you a, a communications letter, which basically includes a lot of what I just mentioned, we do have to communicate under auditing standards if we came across any fraud or illegal acts during the audit with the financial transactions, and we're happy to report that we did not, we didn't encounter any significant difficulties in conducting the audit, you know, everybody in finance and, and, you know, the, the people we contacted in the town helped us do what we needed to do, we also have to report in that communication if we had significant audit adjustments to the numbers that we were provided, and we did not, so that, that's a good thing, that means the books were, were, you know, done correctly, and we had no adjustments, which is something we always like to have, and we didn't have any disagreements with management, sometimes that happens over, you know, accounting policies or accounting estimates that, that, you know, have to be made, and we had none of that as part of this audit, so with that, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Jeff to get into the nuts and bolts of where the town's finances were for 2019, Jeff.
Thank you, Scott, I just want to briefly touch on, Scott had mentioned the accounting changes for the year in December 31st, 2019, just conceptually what happened as we issued Day Number 84 fiduciary activities, and the reason that applies to the town is because the town is collecting taxes for other governments, and the, those taxes that used to be accounted for within the general fund, based on this new standard, need to be accounted for within what's known as a custodial fund, which is a type of new fiduciary fund, also, as we move those taxes out into a different fund, what used to be reserved as, as a part of fund balance, non-spendable fund balance, for the portion of the taxes receivable related to other governments, namely, the school and the county, was in non-spendable fund balance, that needed to be removed and reflected as what's known as a deferred inflow of resources, so the impact of that, to what used to be in fund balance, is now outside of fund balance, so if you can take the two statements, 18, that we talked about last year, and 19, that we talked about this year, the fund balance goes down by quite a bit, because we're removing that piece from the non-spendable fund balance, and if you, if need be, I can explain that a little better as we get to the fund balance section. So from here, I will dive into general fund revenues and expenditures compared to the budget, this is a really summarized form, the budget was adopted, you can see, revenues anticipated as $3,760,000, and the expenditures were adopted at the same exact amount, which means that no fund balance was utilized to balance the 2019 budget, you could, there were no increases to the budget during the year, so the final budget was the same amount, in terms of revenues, revenues collected were $4,236,000, that is greater than the adopted budget by $475,000, which is clearly a positive for the year 2019, I'll take into some of those details on the next slide, the expenditure side of the budget, I mean, under the budget by about $133,000, as you are running a tight, tight expenditure budget, you're spending most, most of your appropriations, but staying with under the overall plan, which is good, so the net income or the excess of revenues over expenditures for the year was $608,000, that's an increase to your fund balance, very positive for 2019, so we have restated fund balance at the beginning of the year, $1,738,000, it increases this year to $2,346,000. Some details on, specifically on the revenue side of the budget, the real property taxes shows a negative variance of $405,000, and the negative variance is caused by an offshoot of the change in accounting, because these taxes receivable for other entities are no longer housed within fund balance, any adjustments to their reserves needs to hit the, the revenues or expenditures, it needs to hit the income statement, so because the receivables grew from 18 to 19, delinquent taxes, that is, there was an increase to the reserve for uncollecteds, and that's a deficiency in the revenues of the 405, however, you did have an offsetting variance on the other tax items, which is namely, the interest and penalties on property taxes, and that, that line item was $193,000 greater than budget, so certainly positive, and the big one was the gain on sale of tax-acquired property, and that was a $527,000 positive variance, so that line item comes about when the town takes over ownership of, of properties for unpaid delinquent taxes, and then resells those properties for more than the value of the taxes that they were taking over for, creating gain, and that, again, $527,000, very positive for 2019, you could also see use of money in property, there was a positive budgetary variance of $150,000, that was interest income earned on your cash during the year, and the state aid category was under budget by $94,000, most of that relates to the mortgage tax, as the mortgage tax collected from 18 down to 19 did decrease slightly, I think everything coming together, it, it ends up in a revenue surplus of $475,000, which again, very, very positive for 2019, and this is the expenditure side of the budget, nothing really, as you can see, 2018 to over 2019, nothing really stands out, which is good, the, the expenditures were up overall, $54,000, or only one and a half percent, so there wasn't any major increases in expenditures, and you also were able to stay within the budget, or plus of $133,000, and what does it all come down to, it all comes down to your fund balance, as I mentioned before, last year, 2018, end-of-year fund balance, as we stated, $38,000, in 2019, $2,328,000, there's two, two categories I want to bring to your attention in the 2019 column, what's referred to in the accounting standards as assigned fund balance, as for subsequent years expenditures, $3053, that is the amount included in the 2020 adopted budget to balance the budget, that amount of fund balance was, is carved aside for the 2020 budget, unassigned fund balance is, is the residual fund balance after subtracting out the, the assigned amounts, so that is what's left over and for, you know, for use at the discretion of the town council, stands at $1,902,782, typically, a common metric that we look at is that number, the unassigned fund balance, as a percentage of the next year's budget, at 2019, that stands at 44%, which is a very, very healthy number, it's a very strong fund balance position, and that's down slightly from 45% at the end of 2018, so year over year, not, not a big change in terms of that metric. Are there any questions, just stop for just a second, are there any questions on any the fund balance or county changes that I had, had mentioned?
Jeff, it's Gary, would the figures that you just stated be different if the GASP was not changed, under the old standards, or would they be the same, in terms of the unassigned fund balance and, and as a percentage of the subsequent year's budget?
The unassigned changed slightly because of the way the reserve for uncollected taxes is accounted for, so I, I, the impact on the unassigned fund balance only, approximately $200,000, look back at 2018, I believe the number we were talking about was about $1,909,000, but, so that's kind of the impact to the unassigned, the rest of the impact that we're talking about was all part of this non-spendable fund balance, which kind of means it's not available for spending anyway, it's tied up in these, these tax liens, so it, it was all tied up in any event, so there is a slight change, to answer, to your question, there was a slight change in that percentage by about $200,000, but again.
Gary, the other thing that, you know, I just want to bring up also about this town, you know, it, it's quite a unique town, in that
We know that.
We, we all live it, in that, that the town budget is about $3.7 million, as, as Jeff pointed out, and obviously, you collect your property taxes, which are a couple of hundred thousand dollars out of that 3.7 million, but then, you go and collect, what is it, Jeff, about $170 million, $180 million?
I believe, close to $180 million.
Hundred, $180 million in other people's taxes, the villages, the county, and the school districts, so, for your purposes, it's important to have some level of, of fund balance, because in Westchester County, as you know, the towns are required to make those other entities whole for their taxes, you are required to make the county whole, the two villages, and the school districts, and whether you collect the tax money or not, so the issue, you know, happens that if there was some substantial taxpayer or taxpayers who did not pay their county, school, village taxes, you would still need cash to make those entities whole for, for the uncollected taxes, so that's why it's, it's, it is extremely important to have some level of fund balance at the town, and you're, as Jeff was saying, you know, you're at about 45% of your budget in unassigned fund balance, most, you know, towns that, that, that we audit in Westchester are, you know, somewhere between 10 and 15%, but you do need some additional cushion, as it were, to deal with a potential eventuality if, if something were to happen with, with property tax collections.
We are well aware of it, Scott, we, we know, we, we have arrowheads sitting out there.
Yes, yes, we know.
So, the only other thing I'll add is, this is the most conservative presentation you can have in terms of accounting taxes for other governments, so, at the end of December 31st, 2019, the tax liens outstanding were about $3.6 million, the vast majority of that, as we're saying, related to other governments, those, those mostly were not town taxes, anything, any, any amounts of the 3.6 that you did not collect within 60 days by the end of February, is completely reserved for and taken out of your fund balance, which means you've, you've already taken that out of fund balance, and, and you've already taken, taken the hit, if you will, for that total, it's about $2.8 million was left uncollected after those 60 days, so it's a conservative accounting approach, which I think is, is good, because then you can feel comfortable that the $1,909 in unassigned fund balance that you do have left over is truly left over, that's what I like about the change, from my point of view, but just, just to kind of drive the, the point home as to what, what we did here, is that accurate, Scott, what I just said?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure, so with that said, I just wanted to give a brief debt service summary, the top of this slide is the bonded debt, that's outstanding, you had a small piece of Rye Town Park roof renovations from 2010, bond outstanding, which should by now be paid, of $75,000, you issued a, a bond in 2017, $7.381, that amount, $6,725 is outstanding at the end of 2019, new for this year was a bond anticipation note of $7.1 million, 5.1 of which was for town projects, the remainder, $2 million, was taken out to fund Rye Town Park projects, at a favorable interest rate of 1.75%, that note becomes due in October of this year, where you will either roll it into a new short-term loan, or you will have the option of going out and turning it into a long-term bond, so total between the general obligation bonds and the bond anticipation notes, total debt outstanding is $13.9 million.
Have, we've paid off the 2010, is, is, Davy, have we paid that one?
Yeah, that's, the final payment was in 2020, yeah, in February, so that's been paid off.
Okay, and I note, note, the interest rate at the time was a lot higher.
You can see on the page, 4.25%, so, and, and then the new bond you issued was at 3%, so obviously, very, the bond anticipation note, because it's a short-term loan, even more favorable rate at 1.75%, not sure what October will bring, also, I, I believe the rates are still relatively low, and hopefully, able to either be refinanced at a similar low rate, or have a long-term borrowing rate to lock it in now, so that'll be certainly something to think about going into October, with that said, I just want to take a minute to thank the finance team, Dave Burns, for, you know, helping us through the pandemic here, kind of go all over 100% remote, to wrap everything up, and the patience that, you know, everyone brought to the table, Debbie, of course, and the M Group, and everyone at the town who helps along the way, I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but it was, you know, definitely a challenging year, and we appreciate all the effort that was put in.
Thank you, Jeff.
With that said, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer, or, it's what I prepared for my remarks this evening.
As I say, thank you very much, thank you, Scott, the, any, any questions from the council people?
That's me.
No? Pam?
Nope.
Bill? If not, then I would like, we have a resolution to, to accept the audit.
I'll move.
On the title, Hope, do me a favor, for the, just retitle in the final version, resolution, it says, "Town Council adopts the audit, we accept the audit."
Okay.
Which, which is correct in the, in the resolution itself. Which, which is correct in the, in the resolution itself. All right. So may I have a motion in a second to accept the audit?
I still moved to accept the audit.
I didn't hear. Jill, you're silent.
I'm muted. I apologize. I second.
All right.
Okay. Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes, thank you. You guys can go home. Oh, you're already home.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Take care, Scott.
All the work that you put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Good evening.
Thank you, guys.
You're leaving us, Dave, too?
No, I'm just thinking.
Okay.
And I want, I want to thank, I want to thank Dave, our controller, and Kathy and Navy and
Michelle.
And Michelle, our accounting staff for all the diligent work that they do in making this audit very effortless on the part of our auditors. And with that, we have looking for it on my agenda. Okay. We don't have a resolution. We have to set the date for a public hearing on local law number two of 2020. Let me just tell you what this is all about. I don't know. We're just setting the public hearing. But what we are doing here primarily is to amend the local law passed in 2009, which required commercial property owners to file an income and expense statement, basically when they file a grievance on pain of not being heard in the grievance proceeding. This amends that section very slightly in part E to not only deny a hearing, but also deny the complaint. But the major part of, of the amendment also requires an income and expense statement from all commercial property owners, not just those filing agreements. Gives the assessor the power to compel by subpoena and also provides for penalties. Either 3% or 4% if they do it for second year of the assessed value. So basically the idea is to get all of our commercial property owners to file income and expense statements. And what this does is allows us to compile a more accurate assessment role. Which goes along with the earlier resolution appointing Edie McCarthy as our consultant. And the resolution we hope to pass next month retaining Tyler to do additional work, especially in our commercial assessments. So that's what this is all about. And all we're doing tonight is setting a public hearing for the next meeting, which is September 15th. I think we, we just need an oral motion, may I have an oral motion to set the public hearing on local law number two for September 15th, 2020.
So moved.
Pam, second?
I second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please, Hope.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi, he was there a minute ago and he just.
He's muted. Oh, he's muted.
I saw him get up and, and walk away. Okay. And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Thank you.
That's cinnamon there.
Okay. That completes our resolutions. We have do we, do we have a report from the assessor Denise?
No, there's nothing new to report other than the Board of Assessment Review is continuing to review the appeals through the summer. People will get their notice of determination on or about September 14th or so. We're trying to send out emails this year rather than snail mail. And, and basically we're transitioning, transitioning from Tyler finishing up their remodel project. Those are the two big things for us.
Denise, how can we send that in? Do we have everybody's email addresses? How do we do this?
Pretty much we have emails on all the grievances. So, yeah.
All the grievances?
Yeah, on the grievances. So from the grievances, we will send the notices of determination, which will hopefully save the town a little bit of money, too.
Good. And it's quicker.
Yep.
All right. Excellent. I, I thought you were referring to every property owner. No?
No, not yet. That might be coming.
Very good. It would be great if we could do that for every property owner, too.
Absolutely.
Debbie, do we have a report on Crawford Park? I know that Camille is away this week. We have something maybe from Vic? Damage report?
Yes. Actually, the, in the agenda, I believe, is Camille's report. Did that make it in, Hope?
Yes. Well, you have to refresh them because we did add it in after four o'clock.
Oh. All right. I'll, I'll, I'll refresh it another time. Vic, do you have anything to add? You're on mute.
You're on mute? Yes, well, report submitted, Mr. Supervisor, but I do want to alert everybody that two weeks from today is September 1st and the school bills hopefully will be in the mail. So be on the lookout. If you do not have your bill by Labor Day, try online to get a copy of it or call the office. This way everyone will have their school bills early so you can plan for the payments. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Actually, I was calling on Victor, but thank you, Nick.
Oh.
Vic and Nick, Nick and Vic.
Vic, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Vic. You're on mute. You're on muted.
Try Alt A or other.
A, I got it.
Okay.
Okay. Let me pull up Laura's report. In total, we've lost seven trees due to this storm. We had quite a few hangers. Actually, approximately 40 trees had hanging branches and limbs. This, this has all been pruned now. The stumps have been ground. We still have some piles of branches that have to be chipped. But overall, considering what happened to Rite Town Park, what we had was minor.
Great. Thank you, Vic.
Now, Gary, I can, I can present Camille's report. So year to date, we have about 253 events scheduled with projected revenue of 36,884.
All right.
So basically Crawford is getting really busy.
Yes, we are. That's good. That's excellent.
Yeah. And we'll, we are, you know, the, the phone continues to ring and we're continually being approached by organizations that would like to use the facility, not only for one-off events, but also repeated community programming events.
We have a middle school art teacher that has book time straight through November and is actually going to start senior adult classes in October.
That's fantastic. I love it. I love it.
Now, I got a quick question. Has anybody, has anybody inquired about maybe doing cooking classes, being that we have that great kitchen in there? We've had one person, they really haven't followed up on it.
Okay.
We do push it though, Tom. We're trying to, you know, get it in use. Mostly right now because of being indoors.
Yes.
Most, most of our, we have lots of yoga classes. I think we have four different yoga classes. We have two different zumba classes right now. Two different, we've had, we have two different art classes, but one of them was five days a week. We've been getting calls from after, for after-school programs for things like that, that aren't going to be held in the schools now because of what's going on. So.
Yeah. I mean, I understand like with the other stuff that can spread out a little bit. I mean, the kitchen I know is a little more confined and they would have to have less people than what they normally would have. I was just curious if anybody's really inquired about it and having a, like a smaller class.
We should, you know, we should reach out possibly to some chefs. They may not be aware of it. We should, especially during COVID with some of the restaurants having such problems. There may be a lot of very competent chefs that would like to conduct classes. I noticed, for example, in the paper today, Blue Hill is closing.
I didn't know. I didn't see that. Goodness.
They're actually, they're not totally closing. He's changing the entire theory. He's having guest chefs and smaller things, I guess. It was in the paper.
I also want to let the council know that we took advantage of a going at a business auction held by Alpersons last week and have acquired at really superior prices a number of, I think Vic calls it loot, that will help us function and provide service. We have flaps for the pavilion so that we can extend our season into the fall. We have replaced our very aging table inventory, both with round tables and rectangular tables. We have a range of chairs for various uses and dividers that we will be able to use when we have such things as weddings in one part of the grounds and kids are still arriving to play on the playground in another part of the ground. So I'm, I'm sure there are more things, Vic, that, that you can think of, but I was really pleased and proud of the staff for how that was handled.
Very good. I've got another question. The, the trailers that we have, I know we were looking with Village of Ry Brook. Has anything more been discussed or moved forward with that?
You don't mean trailers. You mean Butler Buildings?
Well, the, the area.
The C boxes.
The C boxes. To me, they're trailers, you know, but what, what, you know, whatever you want to see boxes, yes. Have we ever?
Yeah, we're looking, we're, we're looking forward, we're looking into it.
Okay.
There are several different manufacturers and shapes and things like that. And we are looking, going forward with that. And in fact, we're hoping to present a list to Senator Mayor of our needs at Crawford Park to see if we can get a SAM grant. And we're going to include that in, in the request.
Because I know, I know they make them where they can look like, actually like shelters instead of just big boxes. They can look like.
They look good. No, they look.
No, they do. They look really good. I've seen a few of them.
No, we are, Tommy, the short answer to your question is yes, we're going forward with that.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm late. I'm sorry. I apologize for being late tonight.
I'll accept your apology on one condition.
Uh-oh.
After your question, you missed, I know that you read the agenda. We had votes on adopting the audit.
Okay.
And setting.
Accepting the audit. Excuse me?
I'm reading the title again.
Okay.
Accepting the audit, setting a public hearing for the local law number two, retaining Edie McCarthy as a consultant.
Okay.
And approving the contract for Nick's electrical. Now, may we count you in favor of all of those or would you like to vote against any of them?
No, I'll be, I'll vote in favor at all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please mark Councilman Nardi as in favor of each of those resolutions?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Davey, do you have a report? You want to say anything?
Just, just that the, the report, the receivable report that's been submitted, the summary. It is July, so July marks the new class of INREMs. And there's 23 total in the class of 20, of which four were previously listed, but so there's, and that's on Schedule D, so that's a new schedule that's added to the back of the INREM receivables. And so now Jeff needs to stop taking vacation and get to work.
You may, you may be assured that I have been in communication with Nick and with Jeff and with Dan Tartaglia, who is going to set a date in October for our auction. And we have several properties to go on the auction block. And as you heard Jeff Shaver say, you know, that's one way we can recoup some of the money we're not collecting in other taxes. And we expect, we expect that the new INREM class will be, Jeff will be serving the petitions. I would have guessed sometime in September, Jeff, early September.
Yes.
And, and the redemption date should be sometime in November. After which.
December.
I want November. Anyway, we're, we're going to move expeditiously on all of those with, you know, with, with the situation the way it is. The town has obligations to make the schools whole, to make the county whole, to make the villages whole. And we can't do that unless we collect money. So we are, we're on top of it.
Right. Gary, I'd just like to reiterate what, what Jeff Shaver was saying. And we are one of the very few towns in, in Westchester County that do collect village taxes. And the two villages, the due dates are different times, like the village is due in June and December and the village, that's a Portchester. And the Village of Ry Brook is due two-thirds in June and then one-third in February. So even though the town, the town has a major, major obligation and it's a big task to collect all those taxes and make the villages whole.
And I, I know that it's very difficult.
No, I just thought for the public to know that.
Yeah, but I know that it's, it's difficult because, you know, some people think that, oh, they collect taxes once a year, like the federal government, you know, normally, you know, it's once a year unless you're an extension. We're collecting taxes almost all year long.
Right.
The two villages and the schools and the, the taxes are broken up into parts and the county and all the, they're all due on different days. And the county is due in April and then you have the villages, as you just said, are broken up. And the school taxes, the school bills are going to be coming out in September. And that's also, you know, two, two payments. So the receivers office is working all year long on this, on these collections and.
Right. Because when they're not collecting, they're preparing to get the bills out. So it's a constant, right?
Absolutely. And you should know, because you used to be the receiver.
Yes. I just wanted to mention that.
That's right. And you were absolutely right to do so. Hope, your, your report is filed. Do you have anything to add? Want to tell us about the shredder?
Of course. So many people have been calling about the shredder. It's scheduled for August 29th. It will be from 10 to 1:00 at 2:22 Grace Church Street in the park. It's scheduled for August 29th. It will be from 10 to 1:00 at 2:22 Grace Church Street in the parking lot. And this year, because of COVID and, and the social distancing and all that new stuff. It's required that we have a police officer on duty that day. And two people from the town working with helping, assisting the gentleman with the shredders. So we have to make plans for that.
All right, great. Thanks, Hope.
You're welcome.
Jeffrey, do you have anything, Jeff?
Are we at a, an election polling site? Do you have a polling site in the town?
What do you mean a polling site?
Are we, is Crawford a polling site?
Yes, they did reach out to us and, and to use Crawford and.
Is that set?
No.
Well, no.
We have, it's interesting you ask, Jeff, because I was talking to Hope just and Nick about that just today. We have how many polling sites in the village? Sixteen?
Sixteen, thirty one.
Buildings, but thirty one polling places.
No, there are thirty one districts, not thirty one.
Districts and, right, sixteen polling places.
Thirty one districts with sixteen polling places.
Sixteen polling sites.
And that's, and that's, that's without Crawford. Crawford would be the seventeen.
Oh, Crawford is replacing Blind Brook School.
Ah, okay.
Because of the construction, right.
Right. And, and Bruno Pontario School is in the firehouse, Ry Brook Firehouse.
Oh, they're not ready. I, I thought, I thought that they, that the, the, one of those two would be ready.
No, they're, I don't know. We're still waiting for all that information. Everything is up in limbo.
Pontario is not ready. I'm not sure about the middle school, high school, but Pontario's got a ways to go.
Yeah, no, they're in construction. But Pontario, are, are they doing anything in the old gym, Pam, in Pontario? Because that was the polling place.
That was a polling place. They're very behind in construction.
We'll get the final determination before.
Yeah, probably next month. We'll have, early next month, we'll have all the information.
Yeah, just, just for the information of the, the council and the public. I've been in communication with Steve Otis and Shelley Mayor and George Latimer discussing. Polling options and advocating for things such as drop boxes for the board of elections. And a, a lot of suggestions are being put into legislation. And we expect the governor, if it's not legislated, to issue executive orders to make voting easier. For most, if not all of our residents. Not, not to have to rely on the post office as much and, and to make absentee ballot easier. And hopefully to make, to have enough polling places so that. The lines will not be too long. And just, just FYI, if you do have an absentee ballot. You can bring your absentee ballot to a polling place. You don't have to mail it on the day of the election. Without hopefully waiting in line. But all of that, I think there's going to be a lot of publicity on it coming forward. A lot of people are interested in making voting easier. A lot of the elected officials are, and, and election people. Are interested in making the electoral processes as easy and effortless as possible.
I think our own Nancy Barr is taking a very big interest in it as well after the primaries and the lines and the backups. She's definitely been working hand in hand on it.
All right. Jeff, do you have anything? You're the only one who hasn't spoken unless you've spoken.
Further.
Okay, very good. With that, our next meeting is September 15th.
Sorry, Gary. Gary, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes, Lindsay.
I don't usually do this, but since I do the in REMs and, and et cetera. I, I just want to, and Nick, I'm sure can, you know, sort of echo this, that the taxpayers. Should know that if you're delinquent with your taxes. And have been used to in the past. Making partial payments that under some sort of, you know, partial payment plan or, you know, schedule of payout. That the town is, is not doing that either anymore or, you know, going forward. We're, we're not going to be permitting taxpayers to make partial payments on taxes that are due and owing. So we will not be accepting those payments.
Okay.
Okay, Jeff, I'll work on getting that out to everybody that's delinquent.
All right, good.
Where they're available. They, they understand that they have to pay all their taxes. We will not take just a year or two. If they're delinquent, they have to clean up. So we'll get that out in the next week or so.
Thanks, thanks.
Very good. All right, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Oh, I second. We were right on that one.
We got it.
That was a quick one. All right.
Hi.
Hi.
It's an exciting meeting, but you know, thank you all. Look forward to seeing you on September 15th.
Yes, indeed. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.